Again, welcome everyone to the May 2nd public hearing over the Enfield Town Budget. Tonight is the public hearing. We'll have a couple of presentations, one from the Town Manager and one from the School Board, and then we will open up to audience questions. If I could, I'm gonna have, read the ground rules and then we will get moving. Public hearing ground rules. A public hearing has been scheduled to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the proposed annual operating and capital budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. Roll call please.
Here.
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 The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current Friday,
April 26th, 2018. Town of Enfield Legal Notice, Public Hearing. The Town of Enfield shall, shall hold a public hearing on the proposed annual operating and capital budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. On May 2nd, 2018 at 7 o'clock PM at the Enfield High School Auditorium, 11264 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut. All electors and taxpayers would be provided an opportunity to express their opinions and further give written and/or oral comment regarding the proposed budget. Annual ground rules for public hearing. There is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time so that everyone will have an opportunity to speak. After each person who desires has had one chance to speak, we shall permit those individuals who desire a second chance. After those individuals who desire to speak a second time, we shall permit those individuals they desire a third, fourth, etc. Please refrain from personalities, and if folks who are interested, would like to speak, we have a sign up sheet at the Town Clerks Table. Feel free to sign up. We are gonna turn it over to the School Board first. Welcome Vice Chairwoman Charlotte Riley and Superintendent Schools Chris Dreszek.
Does this work?
Do you need that?
I don't need it, but he's...
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Charlotte Riley, Vice Chairman of the Board of Education. The Chairman of the Board, Walter Krezel, is in Florida right now for his daughter's college graduation, so congratulations to him. So Board Policy dictates that if the Chairman's unavailable, Vice Chairman takes over. So here I am. The Town Charter says that the Chairman of the Board must present the budget presentation tonight, so I'm gonna do that for you this evening. First, I want to say thank you to the Town Manager and the Superintendent for working so closely on this budget, and also Town Council and Board of Education members as well for working together to deal with the fiscal crisis that the state has passed down to its cities and towns, especially to ours. The joint meetings we have held together have been productive to point out the fiscal needs of the school system and town and have illustrated to Council and Board members just how devastating these cuts are and can be. We are all a team volunteering to make the best we can for Enfield and what financial hand we're dealt. I wanted to start tonight's discussion and presentation with some things that you may or may not know. Did you know the educational portion of Town Budget is about 50%? It used to be 68% way back in the day, before I got here. Did you know that the Town Budget for Education is made up of the following revenue streams? Our educational cost sharing money from the State of Connecticut is approximately 40% of our budget. There is also the excess cost grant for special education from the state. Of note, our special education population here is about 17% of our kids. This excess cost grant is not designed to reimburse school districts for all their special education costs. Rather, these grants only cover a certain reimbursable percentage that fluctuates from year to year. The excess cost grant is also not fully funded by the state. Thus, even with state assistance, we're still facing the same dilemma every year. Allocating funding for special education costs without knowing either the needs of the new incoming students to our district, or what percentage of the costs will actually be covered by the state's grant. As a district, we also apply for an additional $4.7 million in grants. The rest of the revenue comes from everybody sitting here, Town of Enfield. As the Board of Education, we don't have a slush fund or a fund balance which to dip into should unforeseen circumstances occur, such as the large cuts we experienced this year to ECU S money from the state. We must prepare a budget without knowledge from the state how much money we'll be getting as they approve their budget after ours. There are other variables, such as magnet school and crack tuition.
Okay. There are other variables?
I'm sorry about that, guys. Such as magnet school and crack tuition, which we pay out $2.3 million for, but that also may increase because the state isn't holding up their end of the bargain for crack either, so that could possibly be pushed back down to us as taxpayers. So we do have a lot of unknowns that play into how we put together our budget. We do, however, have some really great things that are going on in our school district at all levels of learning. The sister school and integrated high school transition is complete now, and things are really starting to take off and grow. Our STEAM program goes all the way from pre-K to 12th grade. Our elementary schools are growing their PBIS programs to meet the social and emotional needs of our students to help increase academic readiness. Our community has so many partners with our students such as LEGO, ERFC, Kite, ESE, First Readers, Rachel's Challenge, Reads Across America, the list goes on. The involvement with community is incredible. We are increasing our test scores, the academic performance. We have fully accredited middle school that has implemented a social theater arts program to pair special education students with their regular educational peers. And our high school curriculum continues to impress me every single time I hear about it. We have so many great programs and connections with colleges. Students can earn a multitude of college credits and have a jumpstart on a college and a career. Some can even earn enough credits to be almost through to an associate's degree program by the time they graduate from here. All of this is great news for students and their parents who want the traditional four-year college or an associate's path or a specific trade certificate. It really helps ease some of the financial pressures that come along with the cost of higher learning. We're really starting to prepare these kids for their futures. So with that, I'm gonna let Mr. Dreszek take over, give you some more information, and then I'm gonna come back with some comments after.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Vice Chairwoman Riley. Vice Chair, it covered a lot of the things that we prepared to discuss tonight, and I don't want to be redundant. The full, very lengthy budget presentation that the Board of Education saw and ultimately the Town Council saw is in your budget books. There are slides in the beginning of the Board of Education section, so I will try to make this as quickly as possible and not bore everyone talking about all the great things that we do at the Enfield Public School. That said, if I could get this to work. There we are. And I'm gonna jump through a couple of these slides because they were already talked about. Just to give you, as Vice Chairman Riley mentioned, about where we are in the current year, we're all very well aware of the cuts that the Town of Enfield absorbed through cuts to our ECS funding through the State of Connecticut. There are a lot of challenges. We get a lot of questions throughout the year saying, "There's cuts to education. How are we gonna address those cuts during the middle of the school year?" There are some things that people sometimes don't necessarily understand if you don't do this all the time, and it's certainly understandable, is that anytime there's a cut in the middle of our fiscal year, unfortunately, that's usually twice the amount that we would have to cut. So if there's a million dollar cut and we have to do it in January, it's essentially a $2 million cut because most of our expenses are people and resources, and those people are already paid for the first half of the year. So in order to achieve some of those savings, we actually have to unfortunately reduce the double amount of what we ultimately have to give up. One of the questions that I get a lot and that the Board gets a lot and they ask me to address during the presentation, and we talked about this with the Town Council, was, "What's the strategic plan for the Enfield Public Schools?" So if you look up, well, some of them are here, some are now in the audience, but this group of 20, whether it be the Town Council, the Board of Education, actually got together about 10 years ago and came up with what was literally called the Joint Board of Education Town Council Strategic Planning Committee. The fruits of their labor over 10 years is ultimately, case in point, what you're sitting in right now in the culmination of this brand-new, state-of-the-art high school that I can speak from experience being in other high schools throughout the State of Connecticut. This is the nicest one I've been in, even nicer than the ones that my kids do and that my kids are in, and evident of that was coming to the play this weekend and my daughter saying, "Our high school auditorium," and I won't use the word she used, compared to what you guys have here in Enfield. But the culmination of that was, though it was a formal committee that was joint between the Council and the Board, the work never really stopped, even though the committee maybe never met as often as they did over the last 10 years. The work and the mission of that committee was, we were fortunate to have elected leaders in this town 10 years ago, and the same remains true today, to say that, could we continue to offer the educational programming we need in the district if we continued to operate the same way we did 10 years ago? And the reality is that we couldn't. Times change, circumstances change. So the result of that was not only closing a high school and ultimately merging and building this beautiful facility, but also redistricting all the other schools in town. Remember, about six years ago, we consolidated two elementary schools. This past year, we consolidated another one to create that true sister school concept. That was actually, those seeds were planted 10 years ago when that facility, that Joint Strategic Planning Subcommittee actually came to fruition. Some of the accomplishments Mrs. Riley pointed out, obviously one of the largest ones is the successful merger of our two high schools into one here. I can tell you that all of the fear and trepidation we had about merging two schools, they thought it was gonna be like the Sharks and the Jets, and the kids were gonna come in fighting with each other, I can attest to you, that didn't happen. The kids were the, I think parents were a little more anxious about the switch, but I can tell you by the evidence that we have from our kids coming in, it couldn't have, the transition could not have been smoother. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of the accomplishments, and I'll leave that for Mrs. Riley to cover when she concludes. I wanted to make sure I made a point out for the Stowe Early Learning Center. I'm not sure if a lot of people are familiar with what Stowe is. Stowe obviously was one of those elementary schools that was consolidated a number of years ago. About three years ago, we actually came together with this culmination when Stowe was no longer being leased by crack as the Public Safety Academy when they built their new building. We came together with the idea of creating essentially a community centerpiece for early education in town. This is not solely an Enfield Board of Education program or building. We actually collaborate with a lot of faces in this room that I see. The Enfield Child Development Center is occupied in that building as well. We have a Family Resource Center in that building as well. We have our STEAM preschool in that building, as well as our integrated preschool for our special needs students. I might be missing something, but I have notes in front of me, so I see Dawn looking at me nodding. I think I got her. Oh, Kite, I'm sorry. For the first time ever, those who are not familiar with the collaborative, Kite, Kite actually has a physical office space in that building. So it's not just an Enfield Public School facility, this is a town facility. This is us putting our heads together, Town and Board, and what, how will we best serve the community of Enfield, particularly when it comes to early education, with putting our resources and our staff and our buildings together? If you haven't had the opportunity to go over there, there's a LEGO event next week, I believe. I welcome everyone to come over and see it. If you have any questions about it, a lot of them will be answered, just getting the opportunity to walk through that building and see the great things that our kids, both Town and, and School Board are doing. I'd be remiss not to mention that the accomplishments of our athletic department, of our athletic teams. At the time that we presented this to the Town Council, we were actually in the midst of, for the first time ever, putting five winter sports teams in the state tournament, four of which actually landed in the state semifinals. Two of them unfortunately lost in a heartbreaker, but I didn't know that at the time, so I wanted to make sure I recognized that. But if you look closely at the picture, those are four students this past fall that actually signed their national letter of intent to not only participate in collegiate athletics, but signing a letter of intent with a scholarship to play athletics at the next level. So what we did, those signs that the kids are holding, they have their name on it as the school logo where they're actually going to attend, just like you may see when you turn on ESPN and you see Draft A and the kids put their hats up. We recreated that experience for our kids here, but all of the work that went into all of, all of the logos and all of the signage, that was all done by our students. Our students wanted to support their fellow classmates and really honor them for getting the opportunity for their hard work over the last four years here at Enfield High School. Okay, the big question is, who are we? And may not be able to see that very well, but that's our enrollment trend. Back in 2009, we had employed a gentleman by the name of Dr. Pete Prado, who was the demographer for the State of Connecticut up until about 2009, and Mr. Teacat is here, I'm sure he'll correct me if I got my date wrong. But Dr. Prado, back in 2009, not a coincidence, as I said earlier, the creation of the Joint Committee between the Town Council and the Board of Education came together and said, "If we're gonna look at how we service children in the Town of Enfield, what our schools are gonna look like, we need to know who's going to be here the best we can with the information that's given at the time." So when we commissioned this study back in 2009, you had our actual numbers, which are in the blue, and then you'll see what the projected figures are in the orange. And you'll see there's a steady decrease in what the projected, projected enrollment percentages were going to be. That's not immune just to Enfield, that's statewide. Every school district in the State of Connecticut is experiencing some sort of decrease in enrollment. What makes this chart a little bit different was something that none of us could have calculated in 2019, and that was the creation, as I said earlier, of a brand-new high school about three-quarters of a mile down from this facility when crack opened up on Route 5. What's changed is the area that's circled. If you look at where our actual figures were and where our projected numbers were going, we weren't, and the reason that they're lower prior to that is because the magnet school numbers weren't in those figures initially. We actually asked Dr. Prado to recalculate those back in 2014 when the crack school opened. The thing we wanted to point out was, if you look at 2016 and 2017, that's when this place opened, we actually outperformed what our projected enrollment figures were supposed to be. The reason that we did that is because the building that we're sitting in here right now, a lot of the students that were choosing to go outside of Enfield came back. So we use the analogy of when we, if you ever saw the movie Field of Dreams, if you build it, it will come? That was sort of the vision of that committee in 2009, is if we give, our kids want to stay here, we give them the facilities and we give them the programs to stay here, they will come back. I know there was a lot of wishes at that time, but that's really the fruits of the labor of the elected officials who put their name on something and supported all the referendums that went through, where you can actually see for the first time in a very long time, for two years, we outperformed with regards to enrollment what was projected to happen in our school. Vice Chairman Riley touched upon this briefly about our funding stream. I bring this to your attention because right now, our current year fiscal year budget is $69.6 million. People think, "You need $69 million to run a school system." Not necessarily true. We actually get an additional $4.7 million, whether it be federal, state, private grant money. Those are the things that we necessarily can't count on every year, but in actuality, that's what comes in and helps support the school system. So in actuality, to run the school system this year, it actually cost us $74.4 million. 69.6%, 69.6 million of that comes through the appropriation from the Town Council, the remaining comes from, from grants. The concerning part about that, as all, you are all aware, is not just the funding stream from the state that's being declined, but we're seeing a decrease in grant funding across the board, whether it be from the federal government, state government, and you can figure out the pattern here. When the government stops funding, the private organizations that we try to get money from, their pool of candidates who are asking for funding becomes a lot bigger and it becomes much more competitive. Some of the initiatives that we are moving forward with, and I know Vice Chairman Riley touched upon these, so I'll just talk about briefly. There are new things in this year's budget that we're going, that we're proposing to increase to carry into next fiscal year. Transition teachers for some of our special needs students, adding a theater, I wanted to mention the theater program. Right now, one of the issues that we have in this building is we're on an eight-period day, which traditionally we were on a seven-period day. What that means is no student at Enfield High School is currently enrolled in a study. So if you've come to Enfield High School, you have eight classes, and of those eight classes, we increased the number of electives kids can take. So if you have an opportunity to walk around this building, and you can go look at our technology wing, and you can look at our music facilities, which are connected here, we wanted, and that was the, the purpose of, the mission of that original committee I keep referring to, is give kids as many opportunities they can when they're here. Part of that was, we had to increase the number of electives that we had. Knowing funding was tight and knowing that asking for new resources to create new programs is gonna be difficult, one of the questions I posed back to the administration in this building is, "We need more electives. How can we get more kids into certain classes?" Because our classes are capped. You may have 20 kids in a particular elective, or 15 in another elective. What we didn't realize, and we realized during the process, was the largest physical space we have in the building is where you guys are sitting right now. How can we utilize getting more kids into a program that's an elective without costing us any additional resources? And that was the addition of creating a theater program. So the Curriculum Committee approved it this past year, so next year, we're hopeful that we're gonna have musical arts and drama here at Enfield High School, and it ought to be taking place in this, in the arena that you're in right now. We're also adding video production, we're adding AP Civics at grade 10. Everything that's new here doesn't come with new money. The charge to the administration this year was, if you want to add something new, replace it with something that currently exists or find a way to pay for it, because we don't have the resources this year to actually go out and ask for additional money to fund new things. So anything that's new means we found another way to pay for it, whether it be through a grant, whether it be through eliminating something else, but the purpose was, we do want to keep enhancing the program we're offering here, we gotta figure out a way to do it without additional funding. So the spending request. A roll-up cost for next year, just to keep what we have. Contractual obligations, things go up across the board. We're not immune to prices going up on anything we do, whether it be staff, supplies, people, whatever it is. It's gonna cost us $70.7 million next year. Our new initiatives, as I said earlier, cost zero. If you can't pay for itself, I couldn't put it in the budget this year. That came to the magic number of 1.85%, or the $70.7 million. That was the request that I made to the Board of Education. That was the request that the Board of Education ultimately passed on to the Town Council, and that's the, the figure right now that the Town Council is in the midst of debate. Why does that work? Some of you have been around a long time, you've probably never seen the superintendent ask for anything less than 2%. Well, there's a reason for some of that work. The first and the biggest one was, we had the foresight, not me particularly, but at the leadership of a lot of members in this room, knowing that eventually the well was going to run dry when it came to the State of Connecticut funding municipalities, particularly with funding education. So two years ago, we reached out to all of our bargaining units and said, "At some point, we're gonna run out of money." So what every single bargaining unit in the Town of, and for the Enfield Public Schools did, was they either opened their existing contract or we negotiated a new contract. Every employee in the Enfield Public Schools this year voluntarily froze their salary. So for this current year, not one person in the Enfield Public Schools was getting a rate. How is that relevant to next year? It's math. If I'm starting with a bigger number, I need more money next year in order to cover it. Because we were able to contain costs this year as best we could by everybody freezing their salaries, we're starting with a lower number going forward next year. That was the most helpful. Our insurance committee, which I'm sure we'll hear about either through the Town Manager or throughout these negotiations, one of the years over, typically during, when we talk about insurance costs, we're in the 20%, 30% increase, some years even higher than that. About two years ago, we were having a crisis when it came to the cost of health insurance for all of our employees, Town and Board. The Board and the Council got together and formed a joint insurance committee. This year, we're actually, we're recommended through our insurance consultant, because the fund was managed properly, we can include a 1.25% decrease to our health insurance fund. And the last that I want to point out that was able to keep this number as low as it is, is that we have now entered into another year agreement with Smith Bus, and Smith Bus has agreed to freeze our fees for next year as well. So we have a 0% contract increase for next school year, thanks to the help of Bob Smith, who's the new owner of Smith Bus Company. All right, this didn't work as well as I was hoping, but I'll just tell you, there's a few things we didn't know. When I have to present this budget to the Board, I have to do it in January. A lot happens in a school system planning that we don't know in January. The biggest thing is staff. I have no idea how many people are retiring next year in January when I do this. When I presented to the Board the first time, I had one retiring guy. I now have 12, so the circumstances changed a little bit. Health insurance, that's a continuing moving target. The number we're given when we do the budget is the not-to-exceed number. So when I tell you we can cut it 1.25%, I know it's not, I'm not gonna get a call a month later from the insurance consultant, say, "Ooh, we were wrong, we need 10%." It doesn't exceed 1.25% of the decrease. Our hope is that as claims come in throughout the year, we're able to reduce that even further. We're not at that point yet, but we're certainly shooting for it. A big thing that, the last two are pretty big that we don't know, and that's magnet school. I mentioned earlier that there was a shiny new building on Route 5 here. What comes with that shiny new building on Route 5 is a tuition bill. So if an Enfield student wants to go to the crack Public Safety Academy, we legally have to send them, and we legally have to pay for them. The problem is, I don't know that what my bill for crack is going to be, or for any magnet school, until October 1 of next year. So as we're sitting in this room tonight, trying to figure out how we're gonna afford to keep what we have, we have to make an assumption that next year, we may or may not need more money for magnet school tuition, and we don't get that figure until next October. There's a lot of unknowns. The other piece of the unknown about magnet school is, as much as we only care about what's happening in this room, as we should, magnet schools are also funded by the State of Connecticut. And as of right now, I don't believe the State of Connecticut has a budget, so the Director of Crack doesn't realize how much money he has coming in next year. Unfortunately, if his funding is cut, the only other remedy they have through crack is to pass those fees on to the local education authorities, which are the Board's event. So if they come back and tell us we need 10% more to cover our magnet school costs next year, that could be a half a million dollars that I didn't see coming. So there is some money in our budget to, to try to cover for that with the hope that we can eventually take it out. And the last is special education. I know Mrs. Riley mentioned this earlier with our excess cost funding. Typically, excess cost comes in somewhere about 80%. We've been told it's gonna be 70% this year. I don't believe we've gotten the check yet, so I can't make, I can't make a definitive answer to the Board or the Council about what this funding's gonna come in, because I don't have the cash in our hand yet. Once we get it, hopefully before the end of the year, we can better plan for next year. So those are some of the things that we don't know. I'm gonna put this up, it might be hard to read, but just to put in perspective what the past six years have been from the Board of Education with regards to the spending and requests. I'm not gonna read every one to you, I don't want, I've already gone above, above my allotted time, and the Town Manager is gonna get antsy on me, but the one thing I will point out is 1.85%, which is in the yellow in the top, is the lowest number on that sheet anywhere with the exception of two years. You'll see what the Superintendent's request has been in yellow, with the Board of Education ultimately approved in green, and in red with the Town Council ultimately appropriating. My predecessor would probably kill me when he sees this. And I don't want this to give the impression that we're not supporting more education funding, or there's not more we can do with the money. The reality is, we all live in this together. When the Town of Enfield gets cut, the Board of Education gets cut from the State of Connecticut, we're all coming out of the same pocketbook. We get it. I understand that. I had a very tough conversation with a lot of my staff to say, "When you're gonna put in requests for next year, you're gonna tell me what you need, not necessarily what you want. If there's something that you want, you have a way to pay for it, I'll support it." The reason we did that was because we know how bad the Town had gotten caught this year, and I morally and ethically did not feel like that it was right for me or the Board of Education to come in and ask for an astronomical number when the Town was already sitting with a bill at the time of an excess of $3 million on the ECS fund. So our purpose this year was not to say there's not things that we love to do and not things that we need, we only asked for what we needed. That's why the number on that screen is lower than it has been traditionally up until, with the exception of 2013, 14, what was actually appropriated to the Board. Some of our value adds, what are you getting for your money? One of the things that I had said when I met with the Council that annoys me, and I'm glad there's cameras here, sometimes I hear the Town of Enfield doesn't support education. That can't be further from the truth. I think the Town of Enfield supports education, they just want to know what they're paying for. And you know what? You're right. You should know what you're paying. So what this budget brings back, the value it brings back to the Town of Enfield, is it keeps all of our existing staff and program. With 1.85%, we don't have to cut anything. It maintains the transition classrooms that we have for our K-2 students, it continues with our PBIS program, and it enhances our social and emotional supports for students. These are real things that we're experiencing. Whether they have money or not, these issues aren't going away. These kids are gonna show up, 5,200 kids are gonna show up next August, whether we have money to pay for it or not, but this is what this budget looks for. It enhances learning opportunities, adds honors classes at the high school, adds programs that I mentioned earlier. It also allows for compliance for our NEAS and C accreditation. This high school is going through, is going through an accreditation process now, JFK was just accredited two years ago. Part of that accreditation process is they tell you things that you have to do. Everything in this budget maintains that those two schools that are going through accreditation are in compliance. And lastly, it protects and maintains all our athletic opportunities, not just for our varsity, junior varsity, freshman sports, but we also have a robust unified arts, unified sports program here in the Town of Enfield that I feel very passionate about that, continuing on as long as we have the funding to do so. Okay, at this point, I'll turn it back over to Vice Chairman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Dreszek.
This high school is going through, is going through an accreditation process now. JFK was just accredited two years ago. Part of that accreditation process is they tell you things that you have to do. Everything in this budget maintains that those two schools that are going through accreditation are in compliance. And lastly, it protects and maintains all our athletic opportunities, not just for our varsity, junior varsity, freshman sports. We also have a robust unified arts, unified, unified sports program here in the town of Enfield that I feel very passionate about that I, we're continuing on as long as we have the funding to do so. Okay. At this point, I'll turn it back over to Vice Chairman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Dreszek. Okay, so I really want to thank the teachers and the staff and the bargaining units for working with the Board of Education over the years to establish a relationship to help meet the needs of our children and the budgetary needs in these fiscally challenging times, as they have had some years of zero percent wage increases. They really have helped us out a lot, and we should thank them. Our request for the one point eight five percent increase is directly proportionate to our contractual obligations to these collective bargaining units. I have to commend the prior board members on their foresight and tough decisions to prepare us for this moment right now. And Mr. Dreszek and Mr. Longing for their understanding of what was coming down the line for us and working to get a budget that didn't ask for the historical increases that we've had in the past. All this while still providing zero cost initiatives to keep our students engaged in These are challenging times, and we all must make some sacrifices. That being said, we're holding off on things that we do need and will definitely need in the future. Things in the budget book, which is riveting reading material, like funding to support the visit of the New England Association of Schools and Colleges to ensure that Enfield students get the benefits of graduating from a fully accredited high school. Enrollment data projects that JFK will need to add a team of core teachers for 2020. And funding needs to be maintained, continue, to continue to offer the expanding programs at the middle school level and keeping class sizes reasonable there. And the K through two, three through five schools will need to expand their library inventory to meet ever increasing reading requirements. And the kindergarten classes would really benefit from instructional assistance to support students' social, emotional, behavioral, and academic outcomes. That's where their foundation of learning starts. And as we all know from the news, a crumbling foundation does not make for a stable house. The landscape of learning is changing, and so must we to be ahead of the curve so our students can be successful in whatever path they take. It has been proposed by the Town Manager to give us a zero percent increase. What's although is understandable in this budgetary climate, if that should pass, there will definitely be some tough decisions to make as a board member. I know our biggest priority is to keep all the staff that we can and all the programming that we can. However, that might not be possible. There are other options that we must face. We know that we have twelve retirements. We might not be able to backfill those positions, which could lead to less electives. And then if we have less electives, electives that we do offer will have more students in them. We might not be able to meet all of our technological needs that we'd like to do for our students as well. Nothing's set in stone yet, because as I and Mr. Dreszek mentioned, there are a lot of variables that come into play in the educational budget that are out of our control and will not know until after our budget's passed. And we're going to have to work with the cars that are dealt to us from the state. But I know that our state representatives that we have there right now are working diligently on a solution to get the educational funding back to us. So we're all hoping for their success. I can assure you that this particular Board of Education works incredibly well together for the common good of the students in the town. Politics are always put aside, and we always look to see how we can help better the education the students are receiving and how the community as a whole can enrich the lives of our kids. I'm really proud to say that Enfield does a great job of community interaction and collaboration with the school system. They say it takes a village. Well, Enfield is certainly living up to that. We should all be thankful for the numerous volunteers that give their time and expertise to our community to make it a great place to be. So in closing, the Board of Education has been working with the Town Council as a team, educating each other and recognizing all the challenges and needs that each faces. The budget presented tonight takes all of this into account and gives the best case scenario for the most minimal impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chairwoman, Vice Chairwoman Riley and Superintendent Dreszek. The Town Manager, next Town Manager, Brian Chakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you've seen, the superintendent has presented his budget, and the vice chair, as well as the superintendent, have provided some of the rationale and the basis behind their particular budget. That being said, I will go over the town's budget at this particular time. So starting, first of all, with one of the many hats that council wears, and that is in the function of the Water Pollution Control Authority. The Water Pollution Control Authority itself is actually having a public hearing coming up on Monday, the seventh, at six-thirty at Town Hall, where folks are encouraged to come and talk before the board, excuse me, before the authority about their proposed budget that we are reviewing at this point in time. So in short, we'll start with the expenses. And at this point in time, by and large, this is last year's adopted budget, four point one million, and this year, the budget being proposed is four point three million on the operating side. And then on the capital side of the house, eight hundred thousand last year and one point eight million this year. The reason that these increases are being proposed is a few. Operating, in short, the plant is aging. It has a vast mechanical system that's outdated and it requires continuing ongoing maintenance. And it's maintenance that the existing staff just doesn't have the, the time, resources to allocate. On the capital end of things, again, those same systems are breaking. They're breaking much faster than we are able to fix them. And as a result, it's being recommended that we put more money into the capital side of things so that we can repair these systems and ensure that it continues to flow downhill. On the graphic representation, my apologies for the slide on the right, but on the left, this is a graphic representation of the slide that you just saw as a pie chart. And over here, this would be two thousand and nineteen, had that information transposed on the slides, so my apologies. On the Water Pollution Control revenue side, this is a chart of the current rate, and I apologize, this presentation was designed to address several audiences, and I was hoping that this information would carry over. But effectively, these are twenty-nine towns in and around the metro Hartford area who are effectively our competition as a community, if you will. Right here, Enfield is at the bottom of the list with the current rates. The average monthly use, the average monthly user pays about twenty-two dollars and four cents and annually, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Now, this rate structure has remained consistent for a five-year period, and that five-year period is coming to an end effective July one. As a result, we are recommending a three percent rate increase on the commodity side of the house. So the commodity side is what you use. So the, the more that you use, the more that you pay, the less that you use, the less that you pay. And in addition to the commodity charge, which are represented up here, what we're recommending is that a fixed fee of ten dollars a month or thirty dollars a quarter for the average resident be added to the fee structure. This is what we are calling the ready-to-serv charge. So for those of you who might use a very minimal amount of sewage daily, the pipe that your sewage flows through costs the same as the pipe for somebody who might use significantly more volume daily. So regardless of whether or not you flush once or you flush a hundred times, the price of the pipe remains the same. And as a result, we need to find a stable revenue stream to be able to address the long-term physical needs of the plant. This fee, this recommended fee, is specifically designed to cover fixed asset and debt costs of the system. It is not being recommended to pay for daily operating expenses. Just to kind of give you a summary, because I'm sure that this is hard to read back there, and again, my apologies. For the user who loses less than twenty thousand gallons, the current rate is three point three nine per thousand gallons, and we are recommending a rate increase to three point four nine per thousand gallons. So that's a difference of about ten cents. For those who use over twenty thousand gallons, it's a rate increase of about sixteen cents. It'll go from five dollars and eight cents per thousand gallon to five dollars and twenty-four cents per thousand gallon. So again, I touched on a few of these, but this is the slide that bullet points the reason for these particular recommended rate increases. We had the five-year rate freeze, as you heard the superintendent say. No matter how efficient and effective he is at operating, the cost to do business continues to go up, and that's the same for us on the government side of the house and in the wastewater industry. We have some unanticipated rate modifications that occurred earlier on. So there were some summer watering discount premiums that were put in as well as a readjustment of the tiered system of rate users. So because of those, the initial, the initial forecast did not generate the revenues that were initially intended, and so there's some additional revenue that now needs to be generated going forward. You heard me talk about the aging of the system, the increased demand for maintenance, the accelerated failure of the equipment. We've got a thirty million dollar plant project that we're getting ready to implement to upgrade the plant. And that plant project anticipated a particular amount of grant dollars from the state. Those dollars are not coming in as anticipated. We do not believe that those dollars will materialize over the long term, and so we have to look at a way to cover that funding gap. So that's another reason that we looked to recommend the increase of rates. So for the average daily user, this is fourteen, fourteen thousand, three hundred thirty-three gallons per quarter. The annual rate would be about a hundred and ninety-five dollars right here. The proposed rate increase would elevate that to just over two hundred dollars with an average annual difference of five dollars and seventy-five cents. On the usage side, this is the seasonal adjustment. In this instance, we are recommending a decrease from seven point five percent to seven percent even. And in this particular instance, the difference would be fourteen cents would be the, the difference there. And the ready-to-serv charge, again, this is the new fee, that would be a hundred and twenty dollars. So from what we are paying today as the average user, it's a hundred and ninety dollars and seventy cents, right about here. The new bill would be three hundred and sixteen dollars and change. On average, that equates to about thirty-five cents a day more that it would cost to ensure that the wastewater in our community continued to flow effectively and efficiently to the plant. The rate change, this is the same table, and it reflects all of the existing rates in the region with the exception of the proposed rate from Enfield. And it moves us from this location here on this grid right here. So it puts us middle of the pack, and that is our proposed two thousand and nineteen rate in comparison to the existing two thousand and eighteen rates of these other twenty-eight communities. So that is the Water Pollution Control Authority budget in a nutshell. Again, the Water Pollution Control Authority is convening Monday, the seventh, at six-thirty in Town Council chambers to take public comment with respect to these particular proposals. With respect to the remainder of the budget, so council taking off their Water Pollution Control Authority hat and putting their council member, council member hat back on, this is where the rest of this presentation heads. One of the things that I want to point out is some general information. I think it's important to note, you know, a lot of people say that they pay a lot in tax. And I want to point out what exactly it is we pay in tax and what we get for that tax. So right now, these two slides represent the current two thousand and eighteen, excuse me, two thousand and eighteen mill structure. Right here, this is the real and personal property. Enfield is twenty-fourth on this list of twenty-nine towns. So we have a fairly low property tax. And this right here is a representation of the same twenty-nine towns on the motor vehicle side, and we are right here at twenty-eight point eight. So we are twenty-fourth out of twenty-nine and twenty-sixth out of twenty-nine in total tax rate. This slide here represents services that are provided to the town. So this one right here is annual library hours. We are third. This is the number of libraries that are operated. We are tied right up here at the top with two. This here is the annual hours of senior center operation. We are number two. This right here is the number of adult day facilities that are municipally operated. We are one of two in this comparison. We are one of three in the state that operate an adult day facility. This slide here, this is the Family Resource Center. We operate two Family Resource Centers, and we also have the second most hours of operation available for those facilities. And this chart, oh, and this chart here represents the number of citizens per police officer ratio. And so for every one officer that we employ, they protect four hundred and seventy citizens of this town. You'll notice that every one of these charts puts us well above the twenty-sixth and the twenty-fourth mark where we were with taxes. That leads us into the budget. The budget that I am about to present to you, which is the budget that I have presented to the council, provides that that service level continues that you saw in those previous two slides. In addition, what it also does is it continues our use of capital asset financing. One of the things that the town had done in years past was when it came time to replace the equipment in its fleet, when it came time to replace the vehicles in its fleet, the town paid cash. And so it created all kinds of peaks and valleys with respect to the money available for these assets. It also created peaks and valleys with the money that were available to cover operating expenses. So the Finance Director and I recommended, and council did approve last year, a financing plan to level off these types of expenditures and to make our dollars go further. So we've continued that in this particular budget. Another thing that we've done is we've recommended the creation of sinking funds. So sinking funds are special funds apart from the general fund, and they are dedicated to a specific purpose. In this instance, we're recommending the creation of three funds. The first fund is to account for facility maintenance and repair of town-owned buildings. The second fund is to account for and accommodate the repairs for school facilities. And the third is the public infrastructure. And what makes sinking funds unique is that currently the town uses what's called the Capital Non-Reoccurring Fund. Most people know it as the CIP fund. And the way that that is set up is when the town puts the money, when the council authorizes money to go into the CNR, after a three-year period, if that money is not spent, it automatically reverts back into the general fund to be reallocated somewhere else in the organization. So if the council puts in, let's say, a hundred thousand dollars for, I don't know, ball fields for the school, and the town only spends forty thousand dollars of that, the sixty thousand dollars that that, that's out there goes back into the general fund to be reallocated, however council deems appropriate. With the use of a sinking fund, what would happen is, is that the council would transfer in a hundred thousand dollars, and maybe we'll use sixty thousand of that for ball fields, maybe we'll use ten thousand dollars of that to fix drafty windows, and the remaining thirty thousand dollars sits in that account, and it gets added to year after year. So it helps to ensure that there is a dedicated pot of money for a specific purpose that remains available and can continue to grow for the benefit of the town and for the staff to make sure that the financial resources exist moving into the future. The last thing that we propose in our budget is an operational consolidation. This is step one of a two-step process. What we're proposing to do is, at this point, under the Department of the Library, because the charter requires the existence of the Department of Library, we move in the divisions of Recreation and the Senior Center. The goal here is to utilize the skillset of the programmers. So in each one of these departments, there are individuals who help program the activities, who help schedule the various events. And they work in a rather siloed capacity, or in a certain siloed capacity, I should say. And what we wanted to do was bring them together, and we wanted to work them more effectively and more efficiently so that we could add a broader range of, of portfolio of programming, of interaction, and of unity of that programming than what's existed prior. So we did put this together and recommend that in the budget. At this point in time, we believe that based on the information we have, this consolidation will actually reduce the overall operating expense of those three units, the library, the senior center, and the recreation center. So we've put that in the budget as well. Some of the more notable capital expenditures, which you've just heard me talk about with the creation of these sinking funds, is right here, there's about seven hundred thousand dollars in new vehicle and equipment that we need to acquire. Last year, we deferred a lot of these purchases with the funding issues that were coming out of Hartford and out of the state capital. And unfortunately, we cannot continue to defer these expenses much longer. Police cars have to run, snowplows have to be operational, so we need to begin replacing our fleet. We've established two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the Town of Enfield sinking fund, so this is for us to be able to maintain our buildings and our facilities. And just for reference, by the way, the reason that this is important is that the town of Enfield is the third largest facility owner in town. We own and maintain over one point four million square feet of space, and those buildings sit on five hundred plus acres of property, and that does not include our recreational facilities or our our open space. So, we are a fairly large property owner, and these expenses are very cumbersome when they're associated with these properties. Right now, I think we've got a study from 2015, I believe, that estimates a total cost of about $100 million to bring all 1.4 million dollars, all 1.4 million square feet of space up to current standards with respect to heating and the utilities and electrical systems and just general maintenance that needs to be done. So, there's funding for town facilities included here. There's funding for school facilities, including the JFK PCB abatement, which will be going on this summer, as well as our ongoing monitoring and maintenance responsibilities. $625,000 in public infrastructure, some of that is to a sinking fund, about $250,000 of that will go to a sinking fund. The rest of that is assigned to support the roads initiatives and other projects. And then, you heard me talk about our square footage, the size of our facilities. There's $125,000 in there to bring in a professional firm to consult on a preliminary consolidation plan, to minimize our footprint, to help us find operational efficiencies, and to minimize our long-term capital expenses. So, there's money that's been included in the CIP, the Capital Non-Reoccurring, for these particular items in a nutshell. Now, on to the day-to-day operations. This is a brief summary of the various large-ticket items that the town has lumped together. As you heard the superintendent say, my proposed budget does provide for flat funding for the school side of the house on a matter of salaries, which is one of our biggest expense items. We are seeing, we are projecting a 1% growth. All other expenditures, though, you'll note here, we're projecting a 3% reduction. You heard the superintendent talk about the reduction in benefits that we record there. This right here, capital and debt, this is a 28% increase. This is the result of the town continuing to roll onto its books permanent financing for the various projects that have been previously approved by the electorate. So, Enfield High School is bringing on permanent financing, Rhodes 2015 is bringing on permanent financing. And then, of course, you heard me talk about the fact that we need to continue to complete the regular update of our tools and equipment so we can continue to provide services to you in a reliable fashion. Graphically speaking, this is the representation of that previous slide. All right. This is a simplified debt schedule right here, and again, I apologize. This right here is a small note that's coming off right here, and then the rest of these, this is Rhodes 2005, Rhodes 2010. This is Enfield High School right here, and this, by the way, is fiscal year, let's see, this is 39 right here. So, fiscal year 39 is when that debt pays off, and this here is Rhodes 2015. This is the current Rhodes project that we're on, and this pays off in fiscal year 2041. Just to give you an idea of where we are at this point in time, the total amount of millage that has to be dedicated to pay down today's debt is 3.36 mils. So, out of all of the millage that we levy, about a third of it right now is responsible for paying down debt. Now, on to the revenue side of the house. All right. So, revenues look somewhat different. We're proposing a 12% property tax. We're projecting a 12% growth in property tax income. This is a reciprocal right here to intergovernmental. This is the money we get from the state, down about 22%. Charges for service, down about 4%, and all other various types of income, we're projecting a double-digit growth at 17%. Again, graphic representation of the slide that you saw previously, and again, my apologies that the data set here did not populate on this graph, but this graph is representative of 2019. Just for your reference, by the way, this presentation with these data sets populated will be posted online tomorrow, so the information that you are unable to read tonight will be available for you to see tomorrow morning. Again, my apologies on the inability to read some of the information. Again, this is a multi-party intended presentation. So, right here, the increase in property tax, that is a direct result of the millage that we are recommending, which is 34.97. This is a 3.54 mil increase compared to what citizens, taxpayers are paying today. This is effective for both real property and motor vehicle. So, motor vehicle would come up significantly with respect to the fact that it's currently at 28.8 mils. I'd like to point out that the projected rate here for 2019 still remains less than the mil rate that was in place in 2006 and only slightly above the mil rate that was in place of 2005. So, the general factors that lead to the proposed mil increase, again, and most notably are the decrease in intergovernmental revenues. That is what we are getting from the state. We've got a stabilization of the tax base, which I'll talk to here in a moment. We've got increasing debt and the deferred assets. So, these are the reasons that on both the revenue side of the house and the expense side of the house, you're seeing the proposed mil rate in this presentation and as part of this budget. So, mil value trend data. This chart right here, I think, goes to explain a lot of why we're having to recommend the mil rate that we're recommending. So, right here, this is '05, '06 on this end of the chart. This right here is projected out through February, or through fiscal year 2020. This right here is the height of the housing boom, okay? So, I bought my house for $120,000. I painted it, and I sold it for $200,000. That's where we are right here. And when we reach this point, the tax, the taxable value of the property in town rose significantly, and based on the information that was available, our forefathers held and capped the tax rate. And, by the way, the taxes are established, the taxable value is established at five-year increments, which is why you see these plateaus, okay? So, the taxable value of all property in the town rockets to high levels. The evaluation, the quintennial evaluation occurs, and then, right after that, the market falls off, okay? So, this right here was the last quintennial evaluation, and you can see right here, the property values, that the value of property declines. Again, the most recent quintennial evaluation, this is the continuation of the devaluation of property from the housing burst, and this is also the departure of Hallmark and the closure of all of the remaining major anchors at the mall. So, that's what happens here. So, we are right about here, okay? So, now, on the state aid side, right here, this is the height of the recession. So, housing boom, busts, unemployment rates skyrocket, and this is when the state provides Enfield and many other towns the maximum amount of money that we've received in gosh-knows-how-long. So, as you can see here, right, so now, as the recession is beginning to take effect and it's impacting the state, less money comes, less money comes, then the market starts to rebound, and boom, this is where we are right here. So, this is part of the reason why you're seeing the proposed rate increase that you're seeing, is because this particular occurrence has happened with respect to the money that the town is getting from the state. So, in order to continue to provide the level of services that you as citizens are accustomed to, we have to accommodate for this gap. So, what does a 3.54 mil increase look like to Joe Blow citizen? And again, I apologize that you can't read this information very well. Again, it'll be online tomorrow. This particular right here, this represents the average value of a home, not the median, but the average value of a home. The average taxable value of a home in Enfield is $125,000 assessed value, okay, which puts the house right around $180,000 market value. So, currently, a resident or an owner who has an average house in Enfield pays about $4,000 in taxes. Under the proposed budget, they would see an increase of about $450 annually, which equates to about $1.25 a day, okay? Respectively, a house valued at $240,000 would see a $590 increase in taxes, $1.63 a day. Somebody who owns a house valued around $300,000 would see a $760 annual increase in taxes, or about $2.10 a day. The remainder of this information here, as well as this particular slide, is a demonstration of how the tax rate affects various commercial businesses, both small, medium, and large throughout town. This particular slide here and the next one to follow, again, I will breeze through only from the standpoint that you cannot read the information, but this is with respect to motor vehicle. So, on the motor vehicle side of the house, for the newest set of passenger vehicles, you're going to see about a $100 increase. For the second grouping of vehicles, from '13 to '15, it's about a $70 increase. From '09 to '12 vehicles, $44. From '05 to '08, it's just under 30, and for anything older, it's $16 and change. That's what the tax change, the tax increase would look like to the average taxpayer in dollars. And again, this is a continuation of the effect of the motor vehicle change, but this is related to commercial vehicles. This chart here is a updated version, if you will, of the chart we showed you at the beginning. So, this is the tax rate. Enfield is highlighted in green. Everyone else on this list remains listed as 2018. So, Enfield is the only tax rate on this list that has been updated to reflect the proposed 2019 fiscal budget, and we move from 26 on this list, excuse me, 24 on this list to 14, and we move on this list from 26 to 6. And this is the necessary tax increase to cover the gap and lost state funding and to account for the growth that is coming because of the debt obligations and capital needs of this town. So, that is the budget that sits before council. They undertake their deliberations just around the corner. So, here we are today, Wednesday, May 2nd, for this public hearing. Anxious to hear what you have to share with council about the information that you've just heard. Monday, as you've heard me say, is the Water Pollution Control Public Hearing on their budget and their rates. May 8, council will begin their deliberation. They have four scheduled dates. These are just the first two, and believe me, based on my conversation with council leadership, they will be deliberating, and they will be making my staff work very hard over the next few weeks to get this budget to something that they feel is much more manageable. Statutorily, or I should say by charter requirement, Monday, the 21st is the last day that council has to debate and adopt a budget before the proposed budget I have shared with you tonight will go into effect. So, as I said, I know that council is going to be deliberating at length, I would suspect, about the budget that I have reviewed with you. So, with that being said, Mr. Mayor, I will give the floor back to you for the remainder of the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. Again, for anyone who'd like to come up and speak, please sign up right at the table with our town clerk. I want to apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. It's certainly not personal, and I apologize in advance. First speaker, Mr. Teacats.
Bob Teacats, Gate Circle. My comment on the budget, five mils too high, has to be cut. Enfield's losing population dramatically. We don't need all the services that you're providing. Manchester's going in the opposite direction. West Haven's going in the opposite direction. Ellington, East Windsor, they have other problems because of expanding population. 109 towns are losing population. Only about 60 towns are increasing population. We need to cut services. You have less people, you don't need all the services. Mil rate affects the house value. People don't realize that. You look at some of the towns, got a 22 mil rate, their house values are worth double. So, if you lower the mil rate, house values will go up. There is a definite correlation. School population is in a demographic disaster. The 2017 births are 288. You know what that means for the middle school? 864 school population. You should be asking, what wing are we going to prepare to close at JFK rather than renovate? Population at the high school is going to be 1152. We're preparing for 1500. We're preparing for 1200. We have a phony demographic study, not by Mr. Proud of it, but by the architect. We can't, we can't defraud the state in asking for money that we don't really deserve. We have to stop. Lower the mil rate. Cut expenses. I'll give you, you can save $6,000 by not having meals at the town council meeting before the town council meeting. That's six grand right there that you could cut. Right there, right off the top. There's other meals, gasoline purchases, electricity. I'm going to give you an example about electricity. Old Enfield hot. It's less than $200,000. We put all kind of light-saving bulbs, energy, all kinds of energy saving. That school should be burning less electricity. Last year, we put $266,000 in electricity. Totally ridiculous. You go down there at night, you think it's Christmas with all the lights going. You have a third shift, maintenance, at the high school. All the other buildings in town do it on second shift. They don't interfere with the patrons at the library. They don't interfere with the people using the town hall. Why does the high school have to be different? We've got seven administrators in the high school. Why do we have seven administrators in the high school? That's another question. So, we can reduce costs. There's plenty of line items to cut, and I think the town council and the school board should look at it closer and do their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Jack Sheridan.
Jack Sheridan, Seven Buchanan Road. First, I'd like to thank all of you people on the Board of Ed and the council for the time that you spend in dedicating to this process. I know from watching it closely over the years, you spend a lot of your own personal time, and I'm here to tell you I appreciate it. I don't appreciate the increases. I actually have a few questions here. When you talk about sinking fund on the town side, the sinking fund, you're talking about the capital you're allowed to spend 2% or two-tenths of a percent of the total revenue, so that would be about $550,000. Is that sinking fund going to be subtracted from that 500? I'm sorry. Is that, is that 500, or the sinking fund going to be subtracted from the allowable amount that you can spend without going to referendum? The other thing on the water pollution control, water pollution control, you have, we just passed a referendum to spend a whole, I think it was 30 million for fixing that, and that was going to take care of it. We paid, I don't know what we paid, I forget, but we paid the people to assess what we needed to do to make the water pollution control thing viable and pay for itself and go from ad valerums to what it is now, and that didn't work. Can we get the money back? Who are we asking for these assessments and then turn around very shortly after and ask us for more money? There's something wrong, and we have people, the school budget, great job, but I don't hear anybody talking about, we closed schools, and our declining population has been declining for now 17, 18 years. And if you look at the averages, 200 a year. Well, the state statute now allows you to deduct for both things. It used to be just one. Now, you can deduct for declining enrollment and closing schools. I don't see anybody mentioning that. So, I just think, and this is just that first So, I just think, and this is just at first glance. The debt schedule, the debt schedule that was on the town side, it didn't show the sewer referendum on that debt schedule. So, and, and this is just at first glance. I'm just saying that I think this is, there's a lot of room. You know, I, I don't, I don't want to cry, I don't want to tell you that I'm on fixed income, but I am. Uh, when I lost my wife, I lost another deduction, so I had to increase my taxes by forty-seven hundred dollars deductions in order to make up. So, you know, things get tighter, not, you know, I didn't get any raises. You know what the, my Medicare net was? Twenty cents. Because when they give you the in- increase, I actually netted twenty cents difference. So, just so you know where I am. But I, I again want to tell you, I really appreciate the work that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Um, Mr. Peabody.
First of all, I want to echo what Jack said. I greatly appreciate the work that you do. All twenty of our elected officials are volunteers. All twenty of our elected officials are under siege. You're under siege from us, the electorate. You're under siege from the issues that we have, our budget issues. And I want to point out, our fiscal condition is not the fault of our town council. It's not the fault of the Board of Education. But you're dealing with the problem. And I know you're going to be able to come up with a fair and equitable solution. I know that because, Michael, you and I worked through in two thousand and sixteen, a number of issues that led to the zero wage increase in the contract. We worked through redistricting our schools. We chose brick and mortar over flesh and blood, but we, we chose flesh and blood over brick and mortar, which allowed us the luxury of keeping teachers employed, which is the heart and soul of the school system. The issue that we're faced with is a direct cost of the legislature in the state of Connecticut. A reason, rather. And again, it's going to be a t- very tough road to hoe. Um, there are a lot of good things that happen in our town. We have a lot of services in our town that are demanded by our citizens. And some of those services may be redundant. Some of those services may have the opportunity to stay in place if we outsource some services. And that's a hard decision that y'all are going to have to make. I want to thank you guys again for absorbing the, the cuts to the school system midterm. That would have resulted in significant teacher layoffs if you guys didn't take and absorb that cut. And just so we have a, a sense of balance here, what does one million dollars in the Board of Education represent? It represents twenty-eight point five teachers. I figured that out because roughly, the savings you get year one is based on a thirty-five thousand dollar year real savings. The balance between that figure and their salaries is separation cost. I would respectfully ask that, that when each Board, each Board of Education member, each town councillor, considers what we're going to do with the budget, that you have the following priorities. Public safety is number one. Always been number one in my book. Public education is number two. I've said that since the first time I got involved in politics, a long, long time ago, before I came back to Enfield. Everything else is tied for third. And it needs to be. The education system, its performance does have a direct impact on the market value of our homes. And if you don't believe me, you go take a look at the successful school systems and you look at the market value of their houses. I appreciate Town Manager and the efforts of doing organizational consolidation. I know from my own practice in corporate America that, that leads to savings. It's a start, and you'll be able to save going forward in the long run by consolidating services. Some of the names may seem kind of screwy to us, like, why would, uh, the senior senator come under the Department of Library? Town managers is, uh, operating under the direction of the town charter. It makes sense. I don't care what title it is, you're going to save costs in, in that kind of a model. The one thing I would like to see, and I don't know if we have to spend a hundred and twenty-five grand in a consultant to do it, but I would like to see a consolidate, uh, strategic facilities plan going over multiple years. That can be kind of common sense. You have this, a large building sitting on North Maple Street that you could probably move some, some town services to and leverage that building. I think that's one of the reasons why it's an annex. So, if we could get that out to, to us, the public, that might ease our ranks as we go forward, because yes, you do have to consolidate the physical footprint of the town of Enfield. Get rid of some of the properties, put them back on the tax rolls. I think that's a great way to go. Now, there's three places where operationally we can, we can look to, to help balance the budget. One is obviously a tax increase. The second is the fund balance. And the third cuts to services and staff. I would hope, and I pr- actually, I know there's going to be a fair, um, balance between the three areas. You can't raise your savings account to play for, pay for current services, because the next year, where's the funding going to come from? The year after that? So, I trust you guys to be good stewards. You've been at it a while. I've worked with a number of you over the years, and I thank you for your time. I thank you for your service, and I sincerely hope that people don't beat up too much on you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it. Yeah, I apologize in advance. Shirley Aqua? Did I say your name last name right? All right. Well, well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mary Estor Drive. Um, I'd first of all like to say thank you all for the good work you're doing for the town of Enfield. Um, I am a college profiter, and I do understand that budgets can be very, very tight, especially when it comes to education. And therefore, cutting and allocating funds and resources can be very challenging. But I'm here to make an appeal and advocate on behalf of Enfield Child Development Center, um, as you make your decision towards the next fiscal year. I used to live in Venon, and I had a four-year-old who was born extremely premature at twenty-six weeks. So, he was in the best-to-three program for a while. Now, considering preschool and everything, I asked some of the providers, and they mentioned that Enfield has one of the biggest schools. So, I got a good review for the town of Enfield, um, Child Development Center. And even though I worked at Westfield eight, I didn't consider moving to Westfield. I decided to come in live in the town of Enfield so that my child could go to that center. I had to be on the waiting list for almost a year, so he had to be at another provider. And I can tell you the quality of education that he got there compared to where he is now, which is the Child Development Center. It's about a hundred and twenty percent difference. I was paying over two hundred dollars for that private provider, and luckily, I am on the sliding scale at the town center, but the quality is totally different. The teachers are passionate, they are caring. When I go to work, I don't have to worry. They give their all. You can tell it's not about the, the money they are making, but about the quality of care they are giving our children. And then to add to that, because my son is so delayed, he's supposed to be in the special ed program, the integrated program at Stowe Early Center. Previously, before coming to Enfield Child Development Center, he used to go on the ba- back and forth. And I would go pick him, and he was tired, and I was like, this is no, there's no point. This kid is not getting any services. So, I really wish he would get into the Child Development Center, and eventually he did. Now, they just walk him across the hallway, and I know, not just my son, but other parents who have their children in the program. And all of us are able to meet with the teachers on both sides and coordinate the educational progress of our children. So, I'm standing before here, they're humbly appealing to you that as you make those difficult decisions, as you think about which, um, units to cut, which facilities to relocate, how to allocate your funds, please, please consider the Enfield Child Development Center and the Stowe Early Learning Center so that our children, your children, your grandchildren can have good educational foundation, and they will be here in the next twenty, thirty years, also being members of this council. Thank you for your time and ability.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Tom Walsh.
My name's Tom Walsh, Zane Street. Haven't been here in a while, I've been wanting these in a while. After the town charter fiasco, I figured nobody was listening, so I stopped coming. I haven't been here in a while, and, um, I've been wanting these in a while, because after the town charter fiasco, I didn't think anybody was listening. Um, but I want to stick your hand in my, in my pocket for three point five mils. You got my attention again. Just my house alone is four hundred and ninety bucks a year, you want. What am I going to get for that extra four hundred and ninety bucks? I don't have any kids in the school system, and I don't use any, I don't really use any services other than garbage and leaf pickup. One of the things you guys really got to think about, like Jack, there's a lot of people, it's not just Jack in this town that there's a lot of fix things. There's a lot of older people in town that fix things. I'm really supposed to get that kind of money? A lot of people on my street are retired. So, I mean, you're going to stick your hand in their pocket, put it in their pocket for almost five hundred bucks. This doesn't include my car, my vehicles. The other thing, too, is, is sewer. The thirty million bucks was the reason why you guys pu- put the sewer tax on us in the first place. We weren't going to get the thirty million bucks from the state unless you, unless you tax the, for the, for the water going out, or, uh, well, you tax us for all the water. Not the water goes in the sewer treatment plant. You tax us to water our lawns, wash our cars. We're pretty much getting screwed on that deal. Again, I, my, my whole thing with this is, and this is ridiculous. I mean, that, that little presentation, I was, I was just great. But, you know, maybe we need to, instead of, uh, raising the mil rate, maybe we need to, to make some cuts. Maybe we need to start hiring managers and administrators that can work with the money we give them and, uh, you know, work with the budgets they already have. Three point five, that's ridiculous. These people in this town, I'm, I'm lucky, I, I'm still working, but I'd like to retire in two years. And like I told other town councils, if you guys tax me out of this town, I ain't going to sell my house. I'm going to rent it to somebody with six kids.
Thank you. Kelly Hemmer.
Hi, I just want to thank the, uh, Town Council and the Board of Ed for, uh, you know, everything that you do. I know you guys put a lot of time into it, and it's a thankless job. So, thank you. Um, I'm hearing a lot of people saying, in the town, uh, everybody's saying that, you know, the town rolls are declining, and, uh, it would make sense if we had more taxpayers, there'd be a less tax burden for everybody. Um, what if we had a, uh, volunteer, um, uh, committee specifically for coming up with a marketing plan and implementing that plan? You know, for, for attracting more, um, residents and especially businesses, especially for the, the mall. I mean, I know we have economic development, and I'm not trying to duplicate it, but just to really put it into high gear, just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Ed Perumba.
Uh, good evening, uh, folks. I said it last year, and I'm going to say it again. Thank you for your volunteers and, uh, stepping out, representing the taxpayers. I guess, uh, if you continue to listen to complaints, I'm going to give you a few suggestions. Quit. If it's bad. No, seriously. Thank you very, very much. Uh, I live at eight Overhill Road in Enfield, been a forty-six-year resident there. Still paying taxes on time. Then I question, how, how long can I keep these up? Jack, this year presented, I retired, and this year, uh, I was looking forward to that. Big bonus we're going to get. Day, uh, increase in our social security. Yeah. Tell me another one. Uh, most of them went to Medicare. I, I beat you, I got a quarter more. Anyways, I know what, uh, three point, uh, six million dollars on less state aid, your hands are kind of tied. You got to pass off that cost to the taxpayers. This will be tough. Uh, if it's pass mutual, you're leaving. It's tough to lose forty-six million, million dollars. But are you planning how you're going to fill that campus? You got to start quick. A good example is Hallmark. When they left, oh my God, the town was devastated. Uh, Hallmark reduced, I think, forty-some odd percent of the, uh, greening cart business right here in Enfield, let alone the employees that, uh, spent their lunch hours, spent some money over at the, do we still have a mall here? Which is a disgrace for Enfield. I know your hands are tied on that, but boy. I guess the only selling point about that, it looks like it's filled to capacity, and when you see used cars out there in the lot, and everyone says, boy, that mall is filled. It's a shame. It really is. It's a disgrace for a town of this size. Population, you're hearing speakers saying the population is going down. Yes, it is. You got a census coming up in a what, couple of years, two, three years? That could harm us. I don't want to see this town be harmed. I, I've been here forty-six years. Possibly, I'll end up dying in this town, and I like to go out with a good note, basically saying, you know, back to a well-balanced town. Uh, I still have a pet peeve. Yeah, it's great when you're retired, you can go round, but I still work part-time jobs just to get, you know, occupy, uh, and get out of the house before I drive my wife nuts or something. And, uh, I go around, I watch, uh, some of the people, I sit there and, you know, fill an hour or two, taking a nap maybe, who knows? But I'm wa- I love this orange line, the blue line, the green line and all that. And they run from, uh, sunup to, uh, beyond sunset. And I look, that's shop writing. You're lucky if you get one or two people writing. Then I saw, I saw a couple over at a gym. Then I saw one over at the medical center, I was at Home Street, I think, you know? I said, I thought we had dial writing. I'm wondering, is that ridership really up there? Maybe it's time to look at that and start cutting some of the hours. I was full, and I read, maybe I misread, that that service to provide to people, they get to and from employment here in Enfield, which I think is good. You go on unemployment at daytime, it's usually what, seven AM to maybe nine AM, and you're out by what, quarter to six? What's, what's all this running around for? Maybe cut it down. Here's a service that I love. I still do, but it's not there anymore. Most of the taxpayers in this town took advantage of that curbside leaf pickup. Am I right? This was reduced from curbside to weekly and no-limited pickups. The following year, it went from weekly limited bag pickups. Then there was only one selected week. If you're lucky, the leaves fell from the trees due to our weather, and you had a limited number of bags that would be picked up. My question, why does government choose to remove the services that most people want? They're similar to, I, 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 I'll use television. Uh, you all watch it. How many of your favorite programs that you enjoy, and you thought you're going to stay on there for a long time? They're gone. Am I correct? Sure. So, why was this removed? Bring it back. I mean, that's going to help ninety percent of the people who's coming out. Two good moneymakers that you guys are missing out on, or maybe you are working on it, I don't know. Fermi was consolidated in the year, what, twenty sixteen, when Enfield? This is a beautiful school. It really is. Uh, I guess it's open serving of adult education, is that? They're feeding it, they're trying to maintain it. Get rid of it. Nathan Hale goes down, what, twenty-seven? Nathan Hale, closed down what, twenty seventeen? And you're saving, I guess what, by closing Hale, you save two hundred, you know, quarter of a million dollars, two hundred fifty thousand. Great, yeah, yeah, sure. Step up the process, folks. Get the person in charge to sell the property, sell it for a buck or two. Get a developer. DECD is, is out there looking to help people. They'll take this, this developer and help him. Medical offices there, what about, uh, Hale? Turn it into like Mark Twain was, right now. You know, uh, adult, uh, look at it. Fermi, good example, you turn it into recreational, you get that professional offices, retail space, you name it. Get some revenue in there. No nonprofits, please. What, what is nonprofits gonna give you, a dollar? But sell it for a buck or two, I'm sure there's somebody else who would push. Compete with Massachusetts. Massachusetts, we used to be what, number one ahead of Massachusetts, forget Massachusetts. Come on, somebody's gotta, you know, be accountable for this. I have another pet peeve, a few years ago, back, and even back in the nineties and, and the late nineties, we were told this, uh, one man or one person, male, female, operation for public work, pick, trash pickup, was one person. Why are sometimes there's two? I don't know, maybe to share jokes or something, or tell stories, or, I don't know. Uh, I, if I understood and followed the, uh, presentation by the school superintendent, I'm very pleased that, uh, the bargaining units decided, hey, I'm gonna give back. I mean, I have to commend it for that, teachers, cafeteria workers, the non-certified staff, great. They're trying to do their part. What about the town side? They wanna open up their contract? No, let's put it this way, most of you folks are probably out there in the private sector. Washington's birthday is a good example. I was told that President's Day, when I was working, working solid and taking Lincoln's away from here, and then take George Washington, four fathers, one holiday. President's Day. Why is the town still happy? Holidays. Presidents, I mean, uh, Lincoln and Washington. One or the other, open them up. Don't start sharing. Pensions, the state is crying about pensions. What I'm doing on that, about pensions? I enjoyed looking at that chart about those roads when they're gonna come to, uh, they got some final payment. Hopefully, I'll be a high foot about it. But, uh, hire some of the roads after we serviced them, two years later, they're crumbling already. Take a look at, uh, I'll give you the exit prior road. Take a look at, uh, what's the other one there, uh, post office and post. They keep repatching that, they repatch it and they repatch. Stop, get, you know, do something, do something. Put the money into better use, one and for all, clean it up. Anyways, in, in concluding, I don't wanna steal the mic any longer, but, uh, I want Enfield basically to be a balanced town, offering affordable services with enough as enough. I agree with the previous speakers, we gotta cut spending, it's fine. Practice like most of us do in our household. I know when boss and my income was reduced, I had the choice. Expenses, less income, what do I cost? We gotta do the same thing. You're representing us, the taxpayers. I have faith in you folks, I think you do the best. Are you having no way down? Good luck.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ed. Mr. Urie.
I am Richard Urie in thirty-four Silver Lane here in Enfield. I've been, uh, a citizen here since nineteen sixty-nine. I absolutely love this town and I love all the work that all the volunteers on the council and all the committees do. And I appreciate all of that. I've never spoken before on the budget and I only came here tonight to, uh, listen. Certainly concerned about anything that's increasing, but extremely alarmed here at some of the things that I saw in it. And maybe I'm taking it out of context, but, uh, one of the charts that, uh, uh, the school representatives showed was a seventy million dollar approved budget. And, um, then there was a s- a part of, a slice of it that said four million dollar grants. And his explanation was that, uh, we don't know what we're gonna get there, but his bottom line was his budget was gonna be seventy-four million. I can't do that if I've got sixty-nine million to spend. I can't say, well, if I got to, well, I didn't get it, so I'm gonna put the budget in at seventy-four million. If that's the case, I'm really concerned about that. And I wasn't aware that the sew- sewer tax was going up so much, uh, it's, I am one of those that is fortunate to have a low volume of sewer tax that, uh, water they use, so my, my taxes low. And from what I saw there, it seems like there's a significant increase that I'm gonna be hit with this year. And in the home taxes, there's a significant increase. And the auto taxes, a significant increase. And it just seems like all of this at once is just too much for the average citizen, it's very difficult. Another thing that was brought up was to talk about Krec schools. I don't know any of the background about that, I've always wondered, why do we have a public school system and then, if it's so grand and glorious, why then have we developed a Krec school system so now that, uh, our, our, our students that can't get the right, uh, education here wants to go out into this system? And then I hear from the, uh, again, the education rep, that, um, these students come up at some point and say, I wanna go to the Krec school, we pay for it. Is there a, um, is there a minimum, I'm not a maximum number? Let's say all of our students said they all wanna go to Krec school. And then we're gonna continue to pay the budget for the, our current system. How in heck can we do that? It just doesn't make sense. Then another thing was mentioned was, uh, uh, and it sounds like a great idea to have a consolidation of resource. That's a great thing for whatever you're doing. They talked about senior center, rec center and library. And what they're gonna do is have one person plan those events. Those are significantly different events that you have there. A different set of people, a bunch of senior citizens, a bunch of other people that have library services, others that have a recre- recreational center needs. How can one person or even together make sure that we get the right events for all of those areas? That's very, very important. And consolidation, that's great, but let's make sure that we take care of that. I was concerned last fall when I'm, I'm looking at the news and I'm finding out that the boiler in the town hall is, has failed. The JFK boiler fails. I'm thinking, who's responsible for that? We're paying all this money for maintenance supervisors to make sure that this gets taken place. Part of the presentation tonight was that we'd have maintenance now, we're gonna do this and make sure this doesn't happen in the future. How can our town hall boiler fail just like that? Unless it blew up, there has to be something that's been degradating over the time. I'm concerned about that. And then I'm concerned about, I saw one of the charts that said, uh, projected tax increase or income that we'll have, it's about seventy-three million. How in heck can we do that when we've lost a Mass Mutual now? Is that something that we can have that we're gonna say, well, everything's going up to seventy-three mil? How can it go up when we lose a major taxpayer like that? Again, that's a concern. I thank you very much for all listening to me. I just hope that you'll do your darndest to try to think about the average system. I am, I'm a citizen, I happen to be a retiree too, and I have a budget and I can't just say, well, I'm gonna get enough, more money from somewhere. So, anything you can do would be greatly appreciated. Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you. Joanne Alphons?
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Welcome.
Okay. I'm speaking on behalf of the Adult Day Center. I would encourage council to support the Adult Day Center because we provide a valuable service to our clients and their caregivers. We are able to provide respite care and would encourage Enfield residents to visit and utilize our facility and services. It's a very special place in my heart. It is my job, but these people deserve to have people loving like myself to take care of them. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Mary Ann Turner?
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Turner, I'm at Seven Middle Road. I got to spend my day at the Capitol today. That'll make your head spin. To watch what they're doing up there and how they are affecting all of you, takes a lot of, uh, energy. At least it took a lot of energy out of me to listen to it. First off, I wanna appreciate, let you know I appreciate all the work you do. Both sides of the aisle, you have to work together to keep Enfield on the right track. And I know there are times, and I'm sure that we all read Facebook periodically, and we may not particularly read positive things. But in the end, I know that all of you do not wake up in the morning and say, gee, how can I mess up with Enfield? I know you don't. And I talk to most of you, or at least I have some opportunities to. And some of the big worries for me is the, the stuff that is going on in Hartford and how that ball is rolling down Dexter Kaufman Bridge right at us. And we saw that happen in the seventeen, eighteen budget just a few months ago, where you had to close this budget with no money. And I, and I have to say that the council did an amazing job by closing that deficit and keeping the, the school whole. Because in this town, we do take education seriously. And over the last ten years, and it was a pleasure to see, uh, the superintendent's talk about what has been accomplished and about the long plan that took place in the last ten years. And many of you were here during that time. Some of you actually just flipped, God bless you.
Bless you.
Flipped sides, right, Tom, or Lori? You were there making those plans. All I can tell you from my perspective is that we've done a lot. But it costs a lot. And I hear all of those folks talking about being retired and how the mill increases is pretty scary. Cause I gotta say, tell you, I was sitting there calculating it going, boy, I better get more business. But, I do have to say, as much as I appreciate the superintendent's budget, and I do appreciate the town manager and what they did, the ball's gonna fall in your lap. You all know that you're gonna have to take that scalpel out and you're gonna have to look at those budgets. And you're gonna have to figure out a way to pare that back. And I guess tonight is where we get to say to you, how about some ideas? But I have to be honest with you, some of the stuff like Ray Peabody, Bob Teacat said to you, they were great, they were interesting ideas to take under consideration. There may be times that we need to get out of businesses that we just don't belong in. If they're not, if they're not sustaining themselves, we may have to step away from them. I'm not saying they aren't good for the town. I mean, I saw the chart Brian put up and where we were falling in different things. And, and it, and I'm very happy that we have all those great services. I don't personally use them all, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't have them. But before I came here, I was out in Union, so I drove from the Capitol, spent pretty much all day there. And then I headed over to Union where they were having a, a meeting that I attended. And while I was there, I kinda chuckled and picked up their budget. And, uh, you know what they pay their first selected? This is with this year's budget. This is his, his price. Twenty thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. So when Tom asked, you know, can we pay people what they're worth? I'm pretty sure that that, uh, selected up there might wanna make a few more dollars. But he was also telling me when I was talking to them, they were going, they were having this fundraiser. And what the bottom line to it was, is they were going over to the dump to get folks to come back to this event that I was standing at so that they could come and participate. And I said to the fella, I said, so you have dump day on Wednesday and Saturday? And he said, yep, everybody goes to the dump. And when I go to New Hampshire, that's what we have to do, it's Wednesday or Saturday. So when you look at Enfield and what we have to offer, we have a plethora of great stuff. I don't use it all, but some do. Some like having their leaves sucked up by the side of the road. I just found it easier cause my husband runs them over with a lawnmower. But, the best part about Enfield, when you've gotta stop for a second, yes, we have a mall that's empty. But, look what when Stanley did over at Hallmark. Phoenix Manufacturing is in the process of hiring more people and my friend just got a job there. You know what her worry was? She was sixty-one years old and they weren't gonna hire her. And you know what they said? They wanted her because she had a skill that they wanted to put in their burring department and that she could go in there and be part of a growing team. So, I want you to know from my perspective, and I sit on the Economic Development Committee, and I'm sitting there with Mike Cirillo, and, and Kelly Hemmer's hitting it right out of the park when she said, a marketing plan? I can't tell you how many meetings I've had in my living room with this small group of people, and that's exactly what we're working on. Now, we're not getting paid. And we're, we're not getting a sandwich at five o'clock when we all ask you to stop doing your day job and then show up at a meeting at five and don't leave there until nine. I think the least we can do is give you something to eat. You don't ever come to my house without getting something to eat, that's the Italian way. So, I guess the end result for me is Enfield may have some issues. I'm not looking forward to a three mil increase. I understand the water pollution control, uh, control having to go up, and I had a couple of questions about that. And I just wanna drop this in here, cause I know this isn't the place for the answer, but what will the increase allow you to accomplish this year? So I'd like you to talk about that. And what, and, uh, can someone just tell me why is there a five-year rate freeze? You can do it under the next meeting you talk about. But the bottom line is, I know every one of you is gonna sit down in your next budget meeting, you're gonna hear what these folks are saying. Some more passionate than me, some more articulate than I am, but you're gonna do what you have to do to keep Enfield on the right track. And not decimate our children's education because they are the ones who are someday gonna be sitting in your seat and having to do the same job, listening to hopefully not me bugging them. Thank you again. And before I go, I wanna just say, Brian, I thought you did a great job as our town manager. I'm very sad to see you go. I think you brought a spirit to the town that was different. I believe that you gave us some opportunities to think out of the box, but I also believe that you did stuff that we may never have considered. And it's, I think, uh, I'm gonna truly miss what you brought to the table for us and I wish you well in Ohio, but I know that you are a true loss to us.
Thank you. Ms. Kilty?
Judy Kilty, eighty-three Abbey Road. I too wanna thank you all for the many, many thankless hours. I know that nobody says, great job, they don't come up and say that to you, but we do appreciate everything you've done. I just have questions, I know we're not getting answers tonight. I noticed that the JFK heating issue was not addressed. We're renting equipment right now, it's gonna get cold and we can't keep renting it. Is, uh, is, is the referendum the plan to fix it? Or if we don't have a referendum, is there a plan to have heat for next year without renting this ridiculously expensive equipment we have? Under, I just started looking at the book, under the expansion, expenditure by function for the public library, how did we go from one million, six hundred thousand dollars to zero? Does that mean we're not funding anything new for the library? Social Service Fund, the revenues went from five hundred and thirteen thousand to zero. And then I see for the year two thousand and nineteen, there's like no budget. It's zero for the senior center. I don't understand, someone mentioned you're combining things. I just hope that the senior center is not gonna get overlooked the way it has been all year and that that will be considered and taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have anyone else sign up to speak. Would anyone else like to speak for the second time?
Bob Teacat, Woodgate Circle. Jack, I got your B. I was getting fourteen twenty-two from social security. They raised me to fourteen forty-four. Next month, the state reduced my EBT twenty dollars. House, I broke out even. But wait a minute, United Health sent me a notice. My free subscription, the extra help, which I didn't have to pay anything. Now I gotta pay six dollars and five cents a month. So I'm behind. I'm, I'm like five mils behind. So anyways, that takes care of that. You know, one thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight is unfunded mandates. And I think that's kind of, shouldn't be talked about. But we're doing things in our school system and funding it that we don't have to do, like pre-kindergarten. It's about two hundred and fifty students that adds to our enrollment. Somebody told me we're not required to have full-day kindergarten. I'm not sure about that. I know we have half-day kindergarten. Used to have it, now it's full-day. We really need full-day kindergarten. Let's, let's drop it. Fermi High, vacant building. For twenty-six million dollars on fifty acres. We go out and sell Nathan Hale, which we owe eight hundred thousand dollars to the state of Connecticut. We don't owe anybody anything on Fermi High, but yet, nobody has put that up on the market. That should be put on the tax rolls for that five-mill increase that we can't afford. How about all the other vacant buildings? I talked to a developer. I'm not gonna mention his name. But he told me, Bob, Enfield is the hardest town to get anything developed. And then when I go in with a proposal, they tell me the apartments I'm putting in are too small. I'm paying for it, I'm the developer, and they're telling me, planning and zoning, that I don't know what I'm doing. He says, why do I even bother to come to Enfield? He says, I can get these projects put in at any other town. So I think it's about time that we had some new members on the P and Z or maybe a new planning and zoning director. Because they're impeding development of the town. Gotta get rid of the vacant buildings. I'll give you an example of the mill rate. We should be comparing towns of equal size. In Sou- in Southington, I'll give you the number. The actual mill rate, two thousand and fifteen, is twenty-eight mils. The actual mill rate in Longingford, which has a smaller police department, they, they run their town with twenty less police officers. That's up to the police chief. And actually, their town is pretty much the same size. Five, five miles of our town belongs to the state. They have their own police. So we don't need a patrol of the prison complex. Twenty-six mils. Shelter is the capital of, of the world. Twenty-two mils. Where are we? Thirty-some odd mils? Come on, folks. Start cutting the budget. Population is, will decline and is declining. We're doing too much in the school system. We have to cut the, we have to cut the budget, period. We can't afford it. People can't afford it. You want to go up five mils? You're gonna have ten thousand less population next year. The actual population is not forty-five thousand. It's not forty-four thousand. It's not forty-three thousand. It's about forty thousand because you've got three thousand prisoners in the prison. That's gonna decline ten point five percent by twenty-four. Manchester is preparing for twenty-thirty. They're making changes. They're doing it now, this year. They're preparing. All we're doing is looking back at the year two thousand, the way things were. The world is not the same. The world's changing. And this council and this school board has to make changes. Yes, Don, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else like to speak tonight? Going once. Going twice. I declare the public hearing closed. Do we have any closing statements? All right, do we have some closing statements before we leave? Let's keep them brief. Go ahead, Councilman Bosco.
I just want everyone to understand, this was not a problem that we caused. This is a problem the state caused. So I don't want to be here because what we have to do is awful. I'm gonna pay the same rate everybody here in the audience, everybody here in the town is. Except I'll probably pay a little more. I don't want a tax increase at all. When we do what we have to do, the people that were here crying about cutting taxes are probably gonna cry that we took services away. We did things that they're not gonna like. I warned everyone back five months ago, I says, you know, they're all complaining about different services that we started to reorganize because we knew we couldn't afford to do it. So we could come to a point that it is only, excuse me, a three-point-five mil on a tax town side. Because if they, we didn't start consolidating and moving things around and trying to tighten things up, it would have been a lot more. I was called Chicken Little. I mean, they actually made a joke on the council floor, calling me Chicken Little, the sky's coming down. Well, the sky came down. And the only way we're gonna fix this is either with a healthy tax increase or we're gonna have to pull up our boots and do the hard things. And it's a non-win situation because I want everyone to understand how our town works. We're gonna have a group of people probably vote no on the three-point-five mil or the amendment that's gonna come up. So what's gonna happen is, if we vote no on the budget, town manager's budget, and we do not have an amended budget that's gonna be approved, technically, the three-point-five mil is gonna go in default. So a no vote on the budget is a three-point-five mil increase to all the taxpayers. So we're gonna play with smoke and mirrors. We're gonna come up with a budget that we're gonna try doing some cuts that's gonna harm, hold the people as harmless as possible, yet still move the town forward. Anyone that votes no on this new amended budget that we're gonna try to pass is actually voting yes for three-point-five million. So anyone that votes no, they think they're gonna fool the public by saying the Republicans or the Democrats or whoever raised your taxes. But technically, if I vote no, it's an easy way out for me to raise your taxes three-point-five. All I have to say is, I didn't vote for a tax increase. But in the reality, a no vote is a yes vote for a tax increase. So I just want everyone to understand, when this comes down to a vote, a no vote is a yes vote. Because if I vote no, I'm voting yes for three-point-five mil. What we're voting on come, come the budget season, or the budget is, what are we gonna do to reduce the mill rate? So if we vote on anything less than three-point-five, we're actually giving you a tax decrease, not a tax increase. Because that three-point-five is already set. And the only way we can vote it down lower is to vote yes on an amended budget, which brings it down. So it's a little bit confusing, but when you see this, a no vote is an easy way out. I can take the high road. I can say, I didn't vote for a tax increase. But really, I supported a tax increase. Because I, the people aren't gonna want to support what's gonna happen to keep the taxes down to a point that is still more than they should be. But we still need to move the town forward. So I, 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 I hope I didn't confuse anybody out there or on TV land. But just remember, a no vote is a yes vote. So if I'm voting no, I'm giving you three-point-five mils, if you like it or not. Thank you.
Mr. Urian, okay. Anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say one thing about, you know, Joe, I, I appreciate what you're saying. But, you know, you try to get into people's heads here and say that a no vote is a, a yes vote for three and a half. I, I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna do everything we can to do exactly what you said. We're gonna put a scalpel to this, and we're gonna spend a lot of time looking at every little line of this budget. It, it, every one of us has been, has been thinking about this quite a bit, talking about it quite a bit with our school board members right now. This is a big decision, and we all pay taxes. And I all, we all have to go home to our houses, and I'm just a middle-class guy. I understand, and that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna fight for you out there as best we can. And then we'll vote from our hearts, and that's our vote. Thank you.
Sorry, just no back and forth at this point, that's all. Yeah, no worries. Anyone else? Again, just want to thank everyone for showing up tonight. We appreciate your comments. We start the deliberations on Tuesday. So just so folks know, it'll be at the town hall. I, I believe it'll be on TV, so you can watch. I don't know if they will be or not. I'm not sure. But we start the deliberations on Tuesday. And I think, again, there's, I don't think there's many folks here who want to pass on a three-point-five mil increase. And for some perspective, before people go, I think just to, to kind of lay it in, we, we're, we're expecting to collect about ninety-eight percent of our local taxes, which is a pretty darn good number. So what's that tell you is that the Enfield taxpayer pays their taxes. We got cut eight-point-five million dollars. So do the math. You get cut six percent of your budget. There's not many people, no matter what their budget is, no matter if it's personal, work, whatever it may be, that can afford that kind of, and that kind of cut and maintain the level of service that they're used to. So that's what we're gonna debate. That's what we're gonna be speaking about in the next two weeks. That's the perspective of, again, the Enfield taxpayer does its job. What we're gonna try to do is what we can to help you. So again, we appreciate everyone showing up tonight, and feel free to reach out to any one of us. Motion to adjourn? Second, Mayor Suzak, second by councilor, and all in all, in favor? Motion passes.